This conference will now be recorded.
Councilwoman Simpson.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Simpson.
Present.
Councilmember Brantley. Councilmember Decker. Councilmember Linton.
Here.
Mayor Skipworth.
I'm here, barely.
We have a quorum.
Alrighty, thank you, City Secretary. Item number two, invocation, and I will lean on former councilmember Suderman to lead us in the invocation. Councilmember Simpson, can you lead us in the pledges?
Praise your heavenly Father. We thank you for all the lessons you've given us as a country, as a state, and as a city. We ask you to watch over the men and women on this council. Help them to make the best decisions for our city, both now and in the future. We ask you to watch over all of our first responders, keep them in your loving hands, protect them. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please draw me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands by nation, by God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On my behalf as Texas Father, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, our God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Item number four, proclamations, there are none. Item number five, announcements and presentations, announcements concerning items of community interest. No action will be taken or discussed. Councilmember comments regarding items of community interest in accordance with Texas Government Code 551.0415. Item five, A, council comments. Start with Mayor Skipworth since he's virtual. Oh, okay, I see. Even everybody, I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person, I am dealing with COVID pretty hard. My wife's dealing with it worse than me today, so I'll, this is a good opportunity to say that COVID has really picked up again out there. There's some new variants around that are, that are kind of evading some of the vaccines and things, so I would really take my misery over the last several days as a reminder to take it, take it seriously and, and just be careful out there. Other than that, I want to thank everybody for being there tonight and I'll leave it at that, thanks. Thank you, Mayor Skipworth. Councilmember Simpson.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight, we really appreciate your time and for showing up tonight at our meeting. A couple of things from Dickinson ISD, Dickinson ISD Transportation is hosting a ride and drive event. If you've ever considered driving a bus, this is your chance. Dickinson ISD will let you drive a bus around our DHS parking lot under supervision, of course. Monday, July 18th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Dickinson High School, you can apply and interview on site. Starting pay is $20 per hour with benefits and holidays, come drive a bus for Gator Nation. On that note, school for DISD starts on August 17th with a transition day for students entering grades at a new campus and August 18th for all other students. Registration and enrollment for students takes place on August 1st through 9th on the Dickinson ISD website. The MI Lewis Annual Gala will take place on July 23rd at 6:00 p.m. at Mainland City Center in Texas City. They are still looking for auction items. Tickets and sponsorships are available on their website and their Facebook page. Adoptions at the Bayou Animal Services and shelter are still 17, 76 through the end of the week. We've had 19 adoptions during this campaign, that's three times as high as normal. You can see all the animal adoptions and the animals up for adoption on their Facebook page. Finally, I want to invite you to check out the Dickinson Public Library, they've got a lot of excellent programs for kids and families and adults as well. You can find information as well on their Facebook page, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Simpson. Councilmember Wilson.
First off, welcome everybody here tonight. I don't have a whole lot, but last week in the newspaper, there was two articles on front page, one on Tuesday, one on Wednesday. Talk about the future of Dickinson, basically with a business that was, is going to be moving into Dickinson. Thanks to our city manager and our EDC director who are directly responsible for this. I think that, I think it was a month or so ago, there was a bunch of criticism about them bankrupting Dayton. Also, I believe that it's also time to let people know that the, there will be shovels being turned at the I-45 project as it gets underway. So, things are looking up for the city. Every time a person runs for office, one of the things that people tell you when you're running, as far back as when I ran, is y'all need to do something to bring businesses into the city, to lower the tax rate, to keep the property owners from having to pay so much taxes. Between the city manager and the EDC director, this is happening. And I'd like to take my hats off to them and thank them, and all the citizens of the city of Dickinson ought to be very proud of what's being done by EDC and this council and the staff at City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Brantley.
Thanks, everybody, in attendance. Mayor Skipworth, get well soon. I wanted to, a couple of things, I wanted to mention the Hope, Hope Connection Community Center event this past Friday was very well attended. Lots of kids there, lots of fun. I want to thank Chief Morales and Captain Stoker, both for being there, being present. It was a great event, they're going to be doing that every Friday night from 6:00 to 9:00, I believe, isn't that, isn't that right, Chief? From 6:00 to 9:00, so it was a great event. Follow Living Faith Outreach on Facebook for more information. Also want to thank Assistant City Manager Chase Carey for working on the Garza situation that was talked about in the last meeting. So, thank you for picking that up, you, you guys working on that. I know it means a lot to them, so they have a lot of big plans and there's some exciting things going on there. So, that's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brantley. Councilmember Linton, oh no, not Linton, Decker.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. The only thing I have is our tributaries in town because this is hurricane season. Look to be in good shape. My concern is the ones that dump into Dickinson, mainly from League City, Home Depot, that is a jungle. Now, are they going to do anything to that? I don't know. Maybe you can find out for us. Thank you.
Councilmember Linton.
Yes, thanks for being here, everybody. I'd like to thank Theo, City Manager Theo, and Assistant City Manager Chase for assisting two businesses in town. First of all, Ronnie's, it looks like code enforcement, there was ordinance that was being improperly enforced and helped them out a bit. And not only that, helped out most every bar in town, so that is a great feather in my cap to help out every bar in town. Also, number two, they also help Premier Martial Arts that Jesse had mentioned. And full disclosure, I'm a student up there, in fact, I just got punched in the face about 30 minutes ago. But it is an awesome program up there and teaches mind, body, spirit, and y'all went above and beyond to help them out, so appreciate that. They're very happy, very happy. Also, a few things, I went to some training along with Councilmembers Jenna Simpson and Councilmember Jesse Brantley. The H.GAC Newly Elected Officials Workshop in Houston, the TML Budget and Tax Rate Workshop in Bastrop. I was actually entertained by accountants and auditors, which was strange at first. Also came back, drove back from Bastrop and showed up here at City Hall for, to be sworn into the Bayou Animal Services Corporation Board. We had our first meeting in a while and learned some things. Looks like we had a workshop scheduled and we'll see how that turns out to discuss it a little bit more in the future of the animal shelter. It's great to be able to help them. The next day was followed with a call with Renee Valdez, Director of IT here. They're looking to fill a system administrator position. Part of my job up at NASA involved some of the skills that were required and evaluated, so they asked me to sit in on the interview. And it looks like we have a really good candidate, but I will let them make that decision, so hopefully I was able to help. Last thing, I attended the market on the bayou, it's the local monthly farmer's market sponsored by the Dickinson Chamber of Commerce, and was able to help them out scheduling musical entertainment for next month's event. So hopefully y'all can make it out for that. Attended the boat inspection with Mr., with Councilman Brantley and Councilman Simpson, thanks for donating the boat ride, appreciate that. Got to see parts of the bayou I haven't seen in a while. And the last thing, congratulations to my fellow NASA coworkers for the release of the images, the infrared images from the James Webb Space Telescope today. It was a long day at work, but it was a great day, just shows what we can do when we work together, so awesome. And then watch out for the heat, watch, it's hurricane season, be prepared, and watch out for the COVID, Sean, get better soon. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Linton. I do want to say welcome as well to everyone, glad to see you here for this meeting. Since the last meeting, I attended a national incident management training put on by the Galveston County Office of Emergency Management. Good to be prepared, this is hurricane season, as, as many have already said. Also attended some training to work with the Galveston County Long Term Recovery Group as well. The only other thing I would like to highlight, you know, as long as the consent agenda gets passed, I do want to provide kudos to former councilmember, former Mayor Pro Tem William H. King III, because through his diligent efforts, the city of Dickinson will be receiving $15,761,000 in community development block grant money that will be able to apply towards hurricane preparedness mitigation, some of those things. Again, like I said, hint, hint, nudge, nudge, provided the item and the consent agenda passes. Those are my only comments at this time. Turn it over to our city manager for 5B city manager update.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council, thank you for that intro. I was going to say we have a few updates for you guys. Number one, wanted to let y'all know that we have kicked off on the county park side of the West Gum Bayou Project Drainage Widening has started. Had a great talk with the school today to, for us to be able to get all the paperwork and so forth necessary for us to be able to shift onto school property so we can start doing the major portion, which is going to be the large detention areas around the high school in Barber. And so I'm very excited about that project being kicked off. Some, you know, we, you know, some people have seen the work, seen the heavy equipment out there. And I just want to let everyone know that that's, you know, while a city initiated project and that the city received the app, you know, worked the application and got it to fruition for funding, we could not have done it without the partnership with the county and school district to be a part of it, so very exciting for that. Also wanted to let you know that we are wrapping up Pin Oak Drive project. We're, we're doing the final closeout of paperwork for that. So, so be on the lookout for, for us pulling down most of the, any of the signage that's left out there because we're about to close up shop on that. Also wanted to say that we are still working on the Nickelstone Street and Drainage Improvement Project. We still have some outstanding work that needs to be done and bonding language that needs to be negotiated on that. And so Hewitt Zollers is working with IDS Engineering to close out the project and work with Lucas Construction on that. The CDBG MIT project, which is our big Hughes Road project, $49.2 million project. We're currently continuing the design work on that, working on the surveying and utility coordination for that. I am very eager to say that the $15 million that is being alluded to, we've already highlighted the project for that, and that's going to be a siphon project to relieve Moore's addition of systemic flooding issues because of the shallow pipeline that runs through Moore's addition. So there will be a siphon and then that, there'll be improvements to drain the, the water to Benson Bayou where we will do some dredge work and so forth to handle that increased water flow to Benson Bayou. So we've already got that project, also want to keep it, let y'all know that we are working on the HMGP, the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program through the Texas Department of Emergency Management. We do have a, a project application for approximately $7.6 million, which would be kind of a part two to the West Gum Bayou project of the detention around the high school. We're going to be going further west, so you know, we're going from east to west on West Gum Bayou, so that's what we're hoping to get application for about $7.6 million in funding to continue that project, which is very worthy. We are also working on the design, final design for the, kind of the downtown 44th and 45th Street improvements. We're going to be using ARPA funding to be the main seed money for that. Along, also ARPA funds will also be helping with some major information technology projects, including network hardening and, and server refreshes and going to cloud on many areas, but, but the vast majority of the money is going to go to redoing drainage and streets kind of in the downtown area and to help, help that situation out there and knock out some of our drainage issues there. We'll be working with our partners with the EDC as some of the 44th and 45th Street improvements run along with some business owners and, and would be a great opportunity for that, you know, to work on infrastructure together. Oak Park Drive is currently, you know, we had our pre-construction meeting and we had our notice to proceed. We should have the contract completion date, which doesn't mean that the, you know, the contract completion date is to be done no later than September 26th of 2022. I know that the school district is very excited to, you know, be working on a concrete street for Oak Park Drive, so we're working on that as we speak, so. So we do have a lot of projects, you know, ongoing, and, and so I'm going to stop right there and just let y'all go into the next set of items.
Did anyone have any questions for the city manager? All right, moving on, item number six, public comments. Members of the public are invited to give comments at this time lasting not longer than three minutes. Comments may be general in nature or may address a specific agenda item and should be directed at the entire council, not individual members of council or staff. Any speaker making personal attacks or using vulgar language or profane language shall forfeit his or her right, his or her remaining time and shall be seated. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate. Do we have any public comments? All right, we have one. Alan Jones. Thank you, Mr. Jones, when you come up, please give your address for the record.
Yes, my name's Alan Jones, with 4501 News in Lake. You'd like to remember, from last month, when I came to the council meeting and was questioned concerning about a public safety hazard. I had a low hanging utility line in front of my house, it's been recently out now by passing trucks. I'm here tonight to express my thanks and gratitude for the attention that this concern received. Chief Ron Morales took this bull by the horns. He was all over it. Over the last 30 years, we've become pretty good friends and I enjoy talking with him, but for a while this month, I almost got tired of talking to him. He called me every day. This is where we are, this is what we're doing, this is what's happening tomorrow. And I'm very happy to relate to the council that the problem was resolved within two weeks. So my hat's off and kudos to Chief Ron Morales and his relentless assault on this task to resolve the issue. Of course, since I received such great response, I felt it was only proper to point out an exposed gas line out in front of my house. But we just, I just discussed it with Chief Morales and he appeared to, he's under impression, it may not even be accurate, but I will, I will pursue it. Did you pass it?
It's going around.
You look, yeah, they look pretty decrepit and they came out to dredge it. The city came out and dredged some of the drainage dishes, unfortunately, while clearing this particular ditch, they exposed that gas line. It's been pointed out to me by several of my concerned neighbors. Personally, I think it could be dangerous considering the exposure and the condition of the metal pipe, it's quite corroded. I'm just pointing that out, I think we should probably have someone that could look at it. Thank you again and thank you to Chief Ron Morales for your relentless work to help me resolve a problem that's been going on for years. It's, it's comforting to come to a city council meeting and have a concern and have it addressed like Chief Morales did. So, again, hat's off to him, thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Item number seven, consent agenda. The following items are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion on these items unless a council member requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and discussed after the consent agenda.
Mayor Pro Tem. I would like to have item 7E removed and discussed.
Item.
7E.
7E. Okay. All right, if there's no other one, I'll entertain a motion on the rest of the items.
Move to approve the consent agenda minus item 7E.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded, has been moved by Councilmember Wilson and seconded by Councilmember Decker. Wilson and Decker to approve the consent agenda for all items minus item 7E. Any further discussion? There being none, a call for the question, all in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries. Item number 7E, consideration or discussion and possible action concerning approval to amend contracts with Kended Keys Collaborative Regarding Master Parks Plan and Downtown Plan for Development.
Would you care for me to start?
Yeah, so I had asked for this to be removed, just simply because I wanted some further explanation. I think there's some exciting parts to this and I wanted to give City Manager Monson an opportunity to share it with us. I do support the item, however, I just wanted him to talk with us a little bit more about it.
Well, thank you very much. So what you have in 7E is, if you, if you remember last time we spoke about moving forward the Unified Development Code and Land Use Plan, I alluded to the fact that we had two other projects forthcoming, we just couldn't get the contracts in a timely manner to you guys in final form. So what we're doing now is we are getting those two contracts put forth and those two contracts, first I'll take on the downtown, kind of like the drill down to downtown specific plan. This is kind of the pet project of the, of the EDC portion of it. This is going to be a lot of, this is going to be the backbone of what is going to help us, guide us in the development of our TERS areas. So in 7E, if you go into, you know, phase eight, you'll have your existing condition assessment. What it basically says is that the following scope may be applied to either of the two and potentially three TERS areas. What we have here is we're highlighting the downtown for this project to try to get spurred growth there. So the TERS, the Tax Incremental Reinvestment Zone, is the public financing arm. But what you want to have is you want to have cross-sections of streets of, of the way you'd like to design your streets, looking at the current conditions and the things that are possible with future development. This will be a tool that'll be used by the Economic Development Corporation in their negotiations with private developers, management district and city, as we partner up together on, on the, not just the aesthetics, but also the type of businesses that are economically feasible to bring into the downtown considering the current condition of the city. So what you don't want to do is target businesses that would have no desire to be in, in the current downtown. Furthermore, one of the big areas I do want to bring up in the downtown plan is that this is going to be merging our 2040 regional transportation plan for the Houston-Galveston area. We will also be tying it into our transportation mobility for the 2045 comprehensive plan. It will also be encompassed with TexDOT's FM 517 and State Highway 3 Access Management Plan and will also be part of other programmed roadway improvements through TexDOT in Galveston County. So what we want to do is we want to make sure what we're doing is in lockstep with what the plans are. And actually, some of it is actually going to be to, kind of in the other way, is maybe even work with these partners to change their plans to meet what our needs are for the downtown as well. So it's really another opportunity to engage that relationship. At the end of the day, what you're going to get in your, the deliverables, your deliverables will have, you'll have a design plan for the downtown. Sorry, I didn't, I thought Sean had a call. So you have two, y'all have a two-dimensional design plan, really looking at the site planning of the downtown with, with the most likely scenarios with economic impact analyses done. We'll also have a drill down of one to two redevelopment sites. Basically, I would say probably just, and, 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 you know, Cortland may say I am just incorrect on this, but one of those two design redevelopment sites, we'll probably have them do a thorough study on, is going to be the Amage Bank site, just to see what is possible on those seven acres of property, because it is a linchpin piece of property on the redevelopment of downtown. Other site I'm sure is to be determined. You will also get two street cross-sectionals that really show like this is the ideal street configuration that's going to be tied in with how we want our strategic mobility plan to move forward with Goodman Corporation as you, as we've approved. You will also get what we call a massing plan, which is what types of businesses should be next to each other to complement one another as part of our economic analysis. And you'll also have a three-dimensional computer modeling done over GIS and LinkedIn, so that what you have is, so when we get with developers, we can say this is the vision that Dickinson has set forward. If you want incentives and you want a package from the city, EDC and management district, you need to meet our standards and we're not just going to take anything, it needs to meet certain standards. So that's one plan. Before I go to the second plan, are there any questions, comments, concerns that I can allay?
No, great job.
Okay, thank you. Part two deals with the Parks, Trails and Recreation Master Plan. This one here is extremely important as we look at activating the bayou. We have some great opportunities sitting before us to add a, a significant amount of recreational space in the downtown. Excuse me, the city, but downtown too. One of the big things that we want to do is we want this to be a Texas Parks and Wildlife Certified Plan. Last time we spoke on this at council, this plan, if pre-approved by the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department, means that if we're doing an element of the plan, it is already pre-approved for maximum points in the grant application process. Some of the types of grants that you can receive as part of the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department is to, is boating access grants, which often will be about a 50% match from the state and the city. You also have the trail systems that can include motorized or non-motorized trails, walking trails and so forth, and those usually match at a four to one rate, four from the state, one from the city. What I would say about the Parks, Trails and Recreation Master Plan is that it is probably the lowest hanging fruit to really bring in a massive amount of grant funding to really spur quality of life in the recreation and parks system. Now, one of the most important things that we are going to do is this will be aligning with our mobility plan with Goodman Corporation. And remember, their mobility is dealing a lot more with transit, traffic, sidewalks, hardscapes. But what they're going to do is we're going to link them together so that what we are going to create is a master plan that brings you from how do you, you know, walk down a major state highway that then leads you to the trails and the parks and so forth. And one of the big things that this Parks, Trails and Recreation Master Plan is going to do is really engage the public on what are the amenities that are needed, because, you know, what we want to do is try to get a wide splay of, of engagement on that. It's also going to create some, some concepts and standards as we are incorporating more acreage in, especially with the Hughes Road development, which is going to be a massive amount. uh, which is gonna be a massive amount of land, uh, really working with the developer there. And once, if we have a master Parks and Recreation Plan, we can actually negotiate, negotiate a pri, a public-private partnership with that company and say, we wanted to meet these standards in the plan and it's already laid out before us. And there may be opportunities to enhance it with grant funding on top of that public-private partnership funding. One of the big things they're gonna do is gonna do an area and facility inventory. And one of the things that I'm gonna be kind of asking them to do is as part of their facility inventory is to look into opportunities to work with the school district, to have shared access facilities so that the, so that the school isn't building something and the city building something. But have a, uh, we're, we're a bit, we're have a budding, growing relationship with the school district that is, I think, doing really wonders in the flood mitigation world. It would be great for us to have that cost-saving analysis done on what are some things that the school desperately needs. And, and I, I have been in discussions with uh, with Superintendent Vocal about some pretty exciting ones that, that, that could come to fruition. So, those are kind of in a nutshell, the reason for those two plans this evening. And, and uh, they would have been a part of the other nights. It's just that the contracts didn't come in in a timely manner. And uh, and so here we are. Uh, just so you know, um, uh, the uh, uh, we are ready for kickoff. Actually, Kendrick Keith's Collaborative is already ready for kickoff. And so, we'll be hitting the ground running on all of the plans that you guys approve.
Any uh, further questions from? All right, well, you've heard the report. What is your pleasure?
Moved, approved.
It has been moved by Councilmember Brantley and seconded by Councilmember Wilson to approve the plan with Kendrick Keith. Councilmember Brantley and Councilmember Wilson. Any further discussion? I do want to say I, I'm, I'm in favor of the plan, especially the Parks Plan, just because I know um, not having a Parks Plan on file for other grant applications, aside from the uh, maximum points in these uh, types of Parks and land usage grants, not having a Parks Plan on file, dings you twenty points on other uh, grant applications. So, God only knows how much county, regional, state and federal funding we've possibly missed out on just because we didn't already have this plan on file. Um, is, any other discussion?
I'll just add, um, when I was running, uh, what I heard from people most often, I think I mentioned it before, I split into two lists, needs and wants. Uh, this was at the top of the wants list, over and over and over again. Uh, more parks here and we have this incredible geographic feature. We need to use it. Um, so, that was all I wanted to say. Looks good. Good job, Theo.
I will say, kind of to echo uh, uh, Councilman Linton, uh, part of the reason I uh, decided to run for office to begin with was for this. Uh, so I appreciate your efforts. Um, and to the wants and needs, I will point out that uh, tonight, we uh, I think if I, if I'm doing the math correctly, we uh, have allocated about twenty-three million dollars towards our needs. And so, I'm excited to look at some of the projects that can address some of our wants. So, good job.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item number eight, adjournment. All right, it has been moved by Councilmember Wilson and seconded by Councilmember Linton to adjourn. Wilson and Linton. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Yep. Motion carries. Good evening, everybody.